Terms of actual committee members. Um, so. Ms. Smiley, can we adopt?
Yes, it looks great.
Okay, cool. Um, Minet, have you had a chance to read those?
I haven't. Just give me one second.
Okay, yeah, take your time. Just let me know.
Good morning, Dr. Felder.
Good morning, everyone.
Ms. Ms. McKenzie?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning. I just got some feedback from, um, one of the equity leads, so I'm going to, uh, forward that to you right now.
Was was that from New Hope?
Uh, it might have been. Let me double check. Yes, it was. Did you already have that?
I do. Yep, Daniel sent it to me.
Got it.
Thank you.
Um, the only thing I have on the minutes is, um, at some point, I believe Ms. Hauser left the meeting, but I'm not sure quite when. My only thought there, um, is, it says attendees express support for the new policy, um, but I'm not sure she was here for that discussion. And so I just don't want to like imply something that isn't, I mean, her perspective is on the policy.
I think they bring the left to at some point.
That may be right. Do we, did we record this meeting?
Um, I would have not.
Yes, the meeting was recorded. Hi, good morning.
Good morning. Um, Ms. Lee, would you be able to check with Ms. Hauser and Ms. Stevens when they were here and just sort of add that into the minutes?
Sure.
Wonderful. So maybe Ms. Smiley, we could just approve them conditionally on adding that.
That in wherever, yeah, at that point that they left the meeting. Yeah. Sounds good.
Okay.
All right.
Sorry, I have never shared, I've never presented, so I'm bumbling around with this, but I'll get it.
You can see it. It's a little small.
Losing that, I'm gonna.
Now, I was just gonna tell you how we can see it here.
Oh, I was wanting to make it a full screen in a second. I just wanted to get it right. Yeah, man. So we will start with a discussion about the gender support policy that we began last time. Um, I figured that we could just kind of workshop it in this time, go through some of the feedback we've gotten, make edits, and hopefully we can get through it. Um, we don't always, you know, sit and workshop and edit sentences, but I think this is the, the kind of situation and policy that we're gonna have to do that since it's, um, a new one. We have gotten lots of feedback. I have feedback from Rebby Kern, who is the policy director at Equality NC, and I got some feedback from Craig White, who, um, works in the policy area for the Campaign for Southern Equality. So I have those edits that I, I waited to update, just so we could kind of work through them as a group. And, um, then I know that we have other feedback from students and from different groups, and I'll have Dr. Keeling speak to that. And, um, we have some questions. There's one question from Mr. Atherton that he sent me via email that I thought I'd have Ms. Dubison speak to, just, um, regarding about how students consistently, um, affirm their gender, and that's a, a statement that's sort of repeated throughout the policy. Um, and we'll just go from there. Does that sound okay to everybody?
Sounds great.
Um, so I guess, um, I mean, I have a bunch of just sort of nitpicky, um, changes that I thought we could go through and make. Does it make sense to start with that, or should we start with bigger feedback pieces?
Maybe we should start with the feedback that Dr. Keeling's gotten, the sort of broader feedback, and then get into like wordsmithy things.
Okay. Dr. Keeling, do you want to speak to the feedback that you received?
Sure. So I got, um, feedback from students who are on the equity team. Uh, let me bring that up. First of all, they were, uh, very excited that this policy was being discussed. They were, said they were happy to be living in a, a district that took this step. So that's awesome that they feel that way. Um, so one of the things that they suggested was including a definition for preferred pronouns to create a better understanding of this concept, and, um, encouraging teachers to ask students what their preferred pronoun is at the beginning of the year, and, um, adding that on forms. They also asked, um, they wish there was more of a commitment in the policy to not outing students whose parents are still unaware of their gender identity. They feel the policy needs to do a more in-depth job of addressing and protecting students who do not identify with their birth sex from discrimination. And, um, they think that the policy, discuss, discussing how students choose to present themselves should likely mention, uh, binding and how school nurses can help students make healthy choices. And they explain that binding is the process of trans men or non-binary individuals who were born as females using binding to constrict their breasts. Um, and they said that it's a safe process if it's done correctly, but they felt there should be some, um, educating around that, that should happen for students. Um, in the gender segregation and other areas section, they had a specific issue with the language writing. It said consistently asserted at schools as this language excludes students who may be gender fluid or don't pass as their gender identity. Um, they wanted to know who the contact person would be in schools. And, and I don't know if all of this goes into policy, but these were just their, their thoughts around it, and it may go into policy. Um, so they wanted to know who is the contact person at their school, who, um, they would initiate the conversation about changing their name and pronouns that's gonna be used with. Um, and then they wanted something to speak to how, um, teachers may, uh, treat students. So they felt like teachers should be taught and talked to about how to make students feel more comfortable, um, because they said sometimes they get looks or that students may not be, the pronoun that they are asking to be called by is not what is happening. Uh, so that's what came from the students, and I'll pause there because that was a lot of great points.
That was a lot of great points.
Did you, um, share this with, I, I don't, um, we had talked briefly about possibly sharing it with the teacher facilitators for the GSAs in the district, and I wasn't sure if you had been able to be in touch with them, if they had feedback about it.
So when I, um, pushed it to the equity leads at each of the high schools, I said to, um, share it with other organizations in the building because I don't know who all of the contacts are or even what all the organizations are. But it was my understanding, at least the feedback that I received from Orange High, from that advisor, that she had pushed that out as well.
Okay. Do you think that it's, um, worth us sort of knowing what the network is in, in our schools? Of, of different clubs and contacts for situations like this?
I think it's always a good idea for students to know, number one, like who are their safe spaces? Um, I know, like, when I went through my safe space training, then I was given something that I could put on my door so that students would just know that that's someone who I can talk to, and this is a safe space for me to be in. So I think something to that effect, and I think, um, yes, like making students aware of if there are that they can get that support, and I think that would be very helpful.
So do you think that's an initiative that we should sort of take on in terms of like, funding those stickers, for instance? I mean, not that that would necessarily be expensive, but like, should we sort, you know, have some sort of concerted effort into doing that?
So, I mean, like I said, like I know for me, I received the sticker at the conclusion of my training. So the organization that did the training, which was out of UNC Chapel Hill, they provided that for us. So, um.
So do all teachers in our district go through that training then?
So Dana, um, if I can, um, I would like to jump in right here. That training happened for our student support services staff about, I've been in the district five years, so about three and a half years ago, and they were provided, it was through UNC Chapel Hill, um, and student support services went through that training and got those stickers to go on the doors. Now, I'm not saying that all students are aware of exactly who those, but, and we can get that out, but the student support services team did go through that training, they did receive those stickers, and those safe spaces are in each of our schools. And we can bring them back. I'm not sure how we could do all teachers, but we could bring them back to do another, um, we could get them to come back in, they are more willing. I'm still in contact with the person that we, um, got to come from UNC and do the training. So that's not an, um, that's not an issue at all. We can get that, and make that happen. And they will, again, like Dana said, once they complete the training, they give you the sticker to put on your door because it was a specific sticker that they talk about, um, so that all students know that that is what that sticker means.
Okay, thanks. That's helpful to know, and maybe something the board wants to talk about as we move forward with this policy. Um.
One thought I'm having here is, um, I, I think before we, I, I think all this feedback, Dr. Keeling, that you got is fantastic and really useful. Um, I think it, I would feel best knowing that each of the GSAs had had an opportunity to weigh in. So, um, I think, go, I'm glad that we got help from the equity teams, um, and it sounds like we know that they got feedback from the GSA advisor or the GSA at Orange, but I'm not sure about, um, the other high schools or, um, I know that at least there used to be some at, some of them, at least one of the middle schools that I know of. So, um, I think it would be helpful to make sure that we sort of have gotten feedback from each of those places if we're not sure that we have yet. Yes, in terms of process and like sort of bringing this to the board, like I would want those, those groups to be able to weigh in first.
Yeah, I agree. I, um, so, Dr. Keeling, I mean, is that some, I, I guess I'm wondering how we can go about doing that if you're not sure who those faculty are. I mean, I'm happy to reach out to principals. I don't know. I, I, that's not typically something the board does, but I'm more than happy to do it. I know everyone's busy. Um, but I, I do agree with Ms. Smiley, it would be helpful to know that those organizations have this in their hands and could provide some feedback on it.
No, that's definitely something I can handle. Um, I think it, it speaks to a gap right here, right? As, as we're talking, because if I, as the equity officer, don't even know what, to be honest, what the GSA stands for, because no, I, I, no one has ever said this, like, other than in this format, like, from the board saying that, um, I have not had anyone to say to me, here's what the organizations are, or chat to me, and that's, so if I don't know, then there may be students who don't know as well. So, um, I will work on that. How do we get that? I think also to what Ms. Cobb was saying, making sure that students are aware of, um, that the student services team has been trained. Cause I, I, I'm not sure that everyone knows where their safe spaces are.
I think that would be really helpful for the board to understand which organizations are at what schools and who the faculty advisors are, just, just so we all know. Um, I feel like that could be information that's out there for everyone to know very readily and seems like to be helpful to you in, um, your role, hopefully, also.
Um, can I interject something?
Absolutely.
I was just gonna say, and this, I don't know if this is the same group that, uh, Ms. Smiley was familiar with, but I know, I, I met with the, um, GSA teacher connection at Stanford, and that lady is no longer there, so. Um, but the, but I'm thinking, and I might know who the, so I'm just wondering if we don't really know, or if, if it's sort of inconsistent school to school, there might be times when there is, is what I'm thinking about. You know, if we have people who leave, it's good to know that the student support services have always been trained too, because it'd be unfortunate if it were reliant on a faculty advisor that the school may or may not have. So I think it's important.
I think that's a really important point.
And to this point about training and sort of who's been trained and stuff, I just think that when we're at the point of approving this policy, I think that's a great opportunity to, like, to ask teachers what they need in terms of professional development in order to, um, really make sure that this, you know, that student, some of the, these other concerns that maybe aren't exactly policy language exactly, but around how teachers are treating students and things like that, like to address some of those things, like the point where we're introducing this is an opportunity for that, I think.
If I could, uh, just add, I, I think that's a great suggestion, uh, Mrs. Smiley. Um, but I think maybe it should be a, um, a combination of both asking as well as providing, because sometimes you don't know what you don't know, so therefore you don't know what you, you need.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great one. Um, okay, so. I'm wondering if now we go kind of through the policy, and I think that it's go, a- as we start to make edits, it's gonna just bring up lots of discussion, I imagine. Um, Eva? You're on mute.
As we get started, I do, because of, of some of the feedback we've received, wanna sort of say at the outset, I want us to keep in mind that this is a policy that covers K through 12, and there is a great variety and diversity of situations that can come up. And I know there's a desire sometimes to be very prescriptive and really, in some ways, try to control the outcome of certain situations because we know how the work to be handled. But in some cases, there is value in leaving it generally because you have situations in our head that we're picturing, but there are a lot of situations that we're not picturing. And so, sort of noting that at the outset to sort of try to be comfortable with not being able to prescribe the outcome of every situation.
That's great. Also, one thing I think maybe would be helpful to have you speak to before we start is the, um, question Mr. Atherton sent to both of us last night that was about, um, the language about students consistently asserting their gender at school, and, um, whether we were going to sort of prescribe how that was defined or not. And you and I talked about it last night, but I, I think it might be helpful since it was asked by a board member for you to give that advice in here, too.
Yeah, so, so what he wrote was, um, the policy has a lot of privacy items, which is good, but it states, quote, "in accordance with their gender identity consistently asserted at school", but is not defined where and how that process would be done or how that would be known from teacher to teacher or staff to comply with this policy. And I'm concerned if we get a complaint or issue, there's no definition of how this is done, and suggests, so, and then his suggestion is that one of the sentences be changed from their gender identity that's asserted at school to the gender identity that will be asserted. And I do understand that this, this term consistently asserted makes a lot of people nervous. Um, but that is the sort of the specific scenario I was thinking about, that you just sort of, there's a point past which you can't in policy define around every possible outcome. Um, and, you know, as to the feedback of, how it would be known that a student is consistently asserting a certain gender identity, there's just so many different ways that that might manifest, that it's hard for me to look at defining it or knowing like what would trigger a teacher to know. I mean, I think part of what triggers a teacher to know is, I mean, this is going to assert it in some way. The teachers aren't expected to, to be mind readers, um, with this policy. And, and you're already giving a hundred times more guidance than anyone's had before just for the students who are, you know, out. Um, but yeah, I, to say like what triggers students or staff, I mean, staff to know that they're under this policy, um, it's just gonna be so different between a first grader and an 11th grader um, that I, I do struggle to know how we would define that without maybe getting a little too in the weeds.
I mean, to me, it just seems like if a student comes forward and says, I want to do this thing, I want a new email, I'm transitioning, whatever, whatever they say, we're just gonna follow their lead. I don't know why anyone would.
Right. I don't think we're, it's not like a disability where we're actively having to go find people who are thinking of transitioning that haven't asserted it yet. Like, that's not, it is really, the, the students will be asserting it in some way.
Yeah. So that makes sense to me, and.
I do think, I mean, this, this piece about a student who identifies as like gender fluid, right? So it's not binary for them. Um, I do think this is a little complex there, um, in terms of how schools should handle that, um, and what is consistently asserted, how that works for them? Like, is there consistently asserted gender identity, gender fluid? And so consistently, we know that they don't identify in that binary.
The binary, yeah.
Um, but then what does that mean for things that we're like getting into the technicalities of like restrooms or locker rooms or whatever? Like, I, I think that that just is a unique case that I'm not sure how quite to address in the policy.
Well, isn't that how, isn't that sort of where gender support planning comes in? Where that student or, you know, with the parents, if they're younger, would sit down and sort of work through what that's gonna look like for that student? Is that sort of how you read this policy, Ms. Dubison?
It is. I think the idea is, again, that we're not needing to, the adults aren't needing to figure out how to address a student who is non-binary. This policy will be triggered because the student will say, I want different pronouns, or I, you know, have a concern about the, you know, uniform for ex extracurricular activity or whatever. Um, I don't get, again, we're not observing students and trying to identify them. They will identify themselves.
So let's just kind of keep this in mind as we work through the policy, and if something comes up, we feel like we want to address more specifically. We will. Does that sound all right? Okay, cool. So, I guess I'm just gonna start, and we'll just, we'll just see where it takes us. Um, can you see my screen okay? Is it big and clear for everyone? Okay. Paranoid, because I've been here before. Okay, so I'm gonna go to page two where we have train, uh, definitions, and some of the advice I got was to take out, let's see, under the non-binary and gender queer definition, um, to take out transsexual because that is being moved away from and offensive to some. Um, well, under sexual orientation, I got feedback that it would be better, so the definition that it here that was written originally was a person's sexual orientation is the individual's enduring pattern of physical, romantic, emotional, aesthetic, or other attraction to another person, and I, um, got other people. And then sexual orientation can be towards person of any sex instead of opposite sex, just, you know, again, kind of moving away from the binary and, um, taking out both sexes at the end of that. So, does that sound okay to everyone? All right.
Hillary, um, that first sentence you edited, I understand why you edited it, but now I almost, I'm not sure it makes that much sense. Um, like, what's enduring? You know what I mean? Is it broad now that, I'm just wondering? It's an enduring pattern of attraction to other people. Does that make sense? I mean, are we trying to say other types of people? I'm not wanting to complicate it, but I'm just wondering what the point of the sentence is.
Um, I think it's just trying to define sexual orientation for people. I mean, are you looking for more of a reason, more of a purpose than that?
I'm just thinking it's not really defined if, I don't know.
Um, people. Okay. Yeah, throw ideas out there. I mean, I'm open.
I just think the, the second sentence is more helpful, but I, I, I don't want to nitpick. I don't know that it's necessary, so.
Yeah, I feel like the first sentence is just like a tee up to the second sentence. Maybe we can put in a semicolon in between them.
Sure. I love a good semicolon.
Sorry, I just taught my daughter this week what a semicolon is because they're my favorite punctuation.
So good. Um, okay, does that look okay to folks? Do you want me to take out the first now clause of this?
No, I, I think it looks, it looks better now.
Okay. Okay, um.
Is this the place where we would also put a definition of preferred pronouns or pronouns?
Yeah, I think maybe, um, and maybe, should we just put it, should we put it in as preferred pronouns or just gender pronouns? I feel like there's a sort of movement away from preferred.
Preferred, right.
Even the feedback I got that I'll be coming to sort of removes preferred from some of the language in this.
Yeah. Um.
I do know that sometimes the term that's used is personal gender pronouns.
Okay. I'll just put, Sarah, did you want to say something?
Well, my only thought was because I think a lot of people are still using the term preferred pronouns. I think we could say this or, you know, preferred pronouns or something like that because it's gonna be the recognizable thing, but.
Um, I could write, like, sometimes no, referred to as preferred pronouns or something.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a strong preference here.
I'll just kind of write that in for now, and we can kind of come back to it.
Away from it, that it's somehow belittling to say that it's preferred?
Right. I mean, is there something more like? Affirmed or chosen pronouns.
Or just pronouns, like my pronouns are.
Um, right.
That's the way I've heard it.
So, I mean, if we're not referring to preferred pronouns in this policy, do we need to define them, do you think?
Nope. No, yeah, whatever the terminology is maybe in the policy, you know.
Yeah. So we can find a good definition of personal gender pronouns. Do you have a, a definition in front of you, or were you just?
No, I was just looking at the, GSA has a publication, but it, you know, it says your preferred gender pronouns is a pronoun that an individual would like others to use when talking to or about that individual. I do feel like that's, I mean, we could include that.
And we could maybe even write like him, her, they, ze, like all of the ones that are referenced in a lower part of the policy. Does that sound good? We'll come back. If you have that language, maybe, if you're able to jump in here, you're welcome to just add it. Okay, so I'm going to move down to the transgender definition. And the feedback I got was to change it from different from their assigned to sex at birth to not exclusively aligned to their assigned sex at birth.
I do feel like that's more wordy and like a little bit less clear, to be honest. I mean, I, I get that, but I'll just say that's like my reaction.
Yeah.
I mean, I think, I mean, I'm, I think we can say that. I just think that's, is so much clearer.
Right? Do you have thoughts about that, Carrie or Eva?
Yeah, I just think about themselves, but. I'm sorry, did I fall behind?
Oh, no, Eva was typing somewhere and then I'm, I jumped ahead to the transgender definition, which originally said describes a person whose gender identity or gender expression is different from their assigned sex at birth. And I got feedback that had suggested changing it to gender expression that is not, or gender expression is not exclusively aligned to their assigned sex at birth. So we were kind of talking about the difference between different and not exclusively aligned.
I like that. I like that.
Make sure we keep the language understandable. I mean, we don't want folks to need a college degree to, to understand this policy.
That's a good point. So maybe keeping it different is, there another word.
Or is not the same as their assigned sex at birth.
I think that's good. Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
Good. I think that makes sense. And it's less wordy. Okay, I also got feedback in the next paragraph where it says male to female and female to male. Folks are sort of moving away from those to AFAB, which is assigned female at birth and AMAB, which is assigned male at birth. So I was going to change that if no one had any objections.
I was just going to say I'm glad you included the two-spirit. As we had mentioned, I'd come across that for the first time reading some Indigenous women publications. I'm glad that's in there.
That was in here from the Buncombe County Schools Policy, so I was pleased to see it too. Should those be hyphenated?
I don't think so.
So, the next piece I had feedback about was under addressing discrimination and harassment. And I think this is a quote from our discrimination policy, but I do wonder why sexual orientation isn't in there? Is the, I should have done this research already. I don't know if that's in our policy or not, but I think it probably should be since we are revisiting it. I think after this.
I believe it is. But that, but that policy is coming up after this one, but I.
Okay. So I'm just going to put sexual orientation in there.
Yeah, I don't think it is right now, so I think when we get to that one, we may need to add that as well.
Okay. If anyone sees anything or wants me to slow down or do this differently, just tell me. I feel like this is a little bit awkward, but not sure how else to workshop it.
I think this is working pretty well.
Cool.
You just need to move your or.
What?
You need to move your or after the.
Can you tell me where you're talking about, Carrie?
Where, where you just added sexual orientation. I think it's.
Oh, or gender identity. Oh, got it. Got it, got it. Yeah. I figure at the end, or, you know, we can approve it conditionally on, with the understanding that some minor editing, like this sort of grammatical editing and some formatting, like at the top of this page, for instance, will need to work on. Okay, so, I was going back to, lost my page scrolling around. This paragraph that starts with harassment and I had gotten feedback to change it to harassment may occur between members of different genders or the same gender. Again, moving away from binaries.
Is this kind of, that makes sense to me. I'm wondering though, is this just a quote from that policy and should we?
Yeah, I do think it's part of that policy and that we should revisit that. So let me, I'm going to make a note of that.
But in the context of this policy, which is a gender-related policy, that makes sense to me that we would say of different genders or whatever, you just say more different genders.
Yeah.
I think that's fine. I think one of the reasons that the word sex is used in our other policies is that that is the term that tends to be used in court cases. And, and part of what we've learned from our recent cases is that sex includes gender, but isn't just gender. But I don't think it's a problem to say gender here, as you said.
In that sentence, you have a the that you need to get rid of if you don't want us doing this kind of.
No, I do want you doing this sort of everything. Thank you. Okay, now I'm going to scroll down. And if anybody sees anything or wants to add anything along the way, please stop me, jump in there, interrupt me. I'm just kind of going through my own list, but happy to.
Could we, in this section about harassment and et cetera, Dr. Keeling had mentioned a desire from the students or from the equity teams to do more to protect from discrimination. And so I'm wondering, Dr. Keeling, could you share a little bit more about that and what the, what the feedback was?
Sure, let me find that part again. It says, "I feel that the policy needs to do a more in-depth job of addressing and protecting students who do not identify with their birth sex from discrimination. The policy should provide a set of steps of how students can resolve issues by educating the alleged offender."
Got it. So, Ms. Dubison, I think I'm wondering whether the, that would be addressed in the other poli, in the harassment and bullying policy? Like, we, I know we have, I think we have procedures that are either in that policy or tied to it.
Yeah, I mean, I guess one, let me just scroll here. Yeah, I don't think that discipline of the bully is, is really something that falls into this policy, and I think that makes sense. But yeah, I mean, we could add, as an example, counseling or, or education as something that might be done in a bullying or harassment situation.
So would that be in the other policy then?
Yeah.
Okay, so we would just note that for the next conversation. Let's scroll down to supporting transgender or transitioning students. And that feedback where for most youth. So in this sentence, it says transgender youth who are in the process of social gender transition often choose a new first name and the gender pronoun that better reflects their gender identity. And I got feedback to say that expresses their gender identity. I'll change all these code placements when we're done with all this. Okay. And then this last sentence of this paragraph, again, moving away from male to female or female to male binary. The suggestion was not to change it to not all transitions are binary, meaning aligning to binary gender expressions and norms.
Hillary?
Yes.
Just before you go somewhere else after that, something about the next paragraph when you have a minute.
Yeah, let me just write this.
So I do want to slow us down here again to make sure that this is understandable to the layperson who's not steeped in these terms. I, to me, meaning male to female or female to male is defining what binary is in order to explain that that's not.
Right.
And we might still need it.
Yeah, no, I think that that's a good point, that we're saying that's not what it is, so, yeah. Okay, that makes sense to me. Does that work for everybody?
Yes, yep.
Cool. Good point, Eva. Thank you for writing me in. Carrie, what, did you want to say something now?
Just looking at this next paragraph, what Dr. Keeling said about the binding, I don't know if it should be in. It just reminded me of that, that's all. I don't know if something should be included regarding that.
So I wonder if Eva can speak to that. I mean, I don't know if that's really our, I don't know where a school's role would be in that sort of thing. I mean, I think it's a good point that our nurses should be educated in that way, but I.
Yeah, it sounded like they had a desire for nurses to be aware of that issue and I guess of the possible dangers in case a student came to them. Which makes sense. I agree, it's maybe more granular than you want to get into in the policy. But as, as Dr. Keeling said, some of their feedback was more about implementation or their experiences than necessarily things that have to be written in that policy.
I'm looking at, so there's a section at the end about professional development, and I wonder if that would be a place where we could mention that we would like for nurses and counselors and support staff to be trained in these areas. I'll just make a note and we can talk about it when we get there.
I, I think we could put in as a, we could consider putting in, in this first paragraph here, the one that may include hormone suppressants, cross-gender hormones, or a B. You could put an example like binding or breast binding or something like that. Just as a reference. And then the next paragraph is about working with the family on a gender transition plan. And so that, I don't know, it's a little bit of sort of a mental prompt that there's, that's another element of, of what a transition might be.
Where should we put that in? May I tell them? Hormone suppressant, breast binding?
I mean, I think, yeah, I mean, I would, that's, that's my suggestion. I'm curious what that.
I think chest binding.
Chest binding.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so then, I'm just kind of reading through the next paragraph to see if there's a place to add anything about.
Maybe there's like a, this meeting should include but not be limited to discussion of the timing of their transition, planning responses to questions, changing the information students for school records. Maybe there's a piece in here like any medical needs or implications for school nursing. I'm not really the right, I'm not sure the right way to say, sure the right way to say it. But if there is something that requires, for example, like a student to take a medication while in school or.
Consultation.
Health needs, I think.
What did you say, Eva?
School health needs, I think, or, you know, school. Just to make it clear that we're talking about specifically their school-related health needs, not.
Right. Right. So maybe before the and?
Yeah.
School health needs, comma.
Or student, student health needs at school?
Yeah.
Student health needs, should I say while at school or just student health needs? I guess I should say while at school.
Yeah.
And about, I don't know how this works with the, the students' request that there be more like protection from being outed to parents. And I honestly have no clue what like the laws or the policies are in terms of how schools should support students in ways they're keeping private from parents. You know, I find that, I just don't know what that's supposed to.
Yeah, it's a very difficult question, and again, one that's going to vary widely depending on age. But there are limitations. I mean, can we change a student's name in Power School without telling their parents? No, I don't think so.
We can't put it in preferred name?
With, and keep it a secret from their parents? I don't think so, no, unless they're over 18.
So we couldn't keep it a secret, but we could still change it. Because it says in here, under student record, schools must use the name and gender that is preferred and consistently asserted by the student at school.
So, yes, I think we could change it, but if, but again, I don't think we could keep it secret from the parents to address the student's question about that. And if we get into conflicting desires, I think that's something we'd have to handle on a case-by-case basis, and I wouldn't want to try and solve that through policy.
You mean like if the parent, if the student wanted it one way?
The parent says change it back, yeah.
So, I don't know if Bob is still on, but if she is, we're in the process of creating for a student's name to be changed in Power School and on email, et cetera. And we're using CMS Charlotte MECC as a guideline. And I think using CMS Charlotte MECC as a guideline. And I think that they have a process in there if the student's parents are not aware, and the student doesn't want their parent to be aware, that we can still make some changes to the name. But I don't know if Ms. Cobb is on it, because she's-
I'm here.
Okay.
I'm here, Dina. So, yeah, so what we took from Charlotte MECC was, one, a form that we are still kind of working on and reviewing, that if a student is, and this probably would be more for a middle and high school student, if they wanted to have their name changed, they would come to the social worker only, and the social worker would work with that student. So there would be a process that if the student has, if the parent is aware, the social worker contacts the parent just to verify that they are aware, and then they complete a form, and that form is sent to one person at district level who would go in and change the name in Power School and all of the places that it needed to be changed to what the student is requesting. At the end of the school year, prior to the school year ending, that same staff person would go back in and change the student's name back, so that all of the legal records, and this is all if there's not been a legal name change. And so this would be so that all of the information and legal documents that go through Power School back to the state would have the correct name on them. So if a student has, they're saying, you know what, my parents are not on board with this, but I am wanting to go by a different name, then they would still go to the social worker, and then the social worker would work with school administration to make the changes, not necessarily in Power School, but throughout all the other information, so that teachers, the cafeteria, and different things like that, that are not like legal things like Power School, would have the chosen name on it. And we do have a form that we've already been working on, and from the Gender Support Network, which we have worked with them since I've been here on different issues that have arisen, we have also gotten a gender support plan that would be a plan that we would work with the student and/or the family with, on how we proceed with the student in the building throughout the year. Who knows which teachers? How do we let teachers know? How are we letting classmates know? If a parent comes up and says something about, you know, especially on the elementary level, little Suzie was Suzie last year, but now it's Johnny this year, and my kid doesn't understand, that gender support plan would help us, based on what the parent tells us, how they want us to respond to comments made by staff and families that are in that classroom or in that school building. I hope that answered the question.
Ms. Cobb, Dr. Felder had sent some information that Power School is going to be updating their capabilities for preferred or chosen names. So does that affect some of the, what you had been working with Mr. Councilman from Charlotte MECC on, or?
So the, what, when he and I spoke, what we talked about was, yeah, that is supposed to be coming, but Power School has not given us, or the state has not given us a date or a timeframe. So that's why they are still using the form that they are using, because they don't know. If we, you know, for the state, it could be-
Can't hold your breath on these things.
Right. So, yeah, we were trying to figure out, like, you know, what could we do to support our students right now?
That's awesome. Thank you. That's really helpful.
So, maybe you were going to bench at this, Hillary, but, so then, like, in this paragraph where it talks about, i.e. the counselor or school social worker?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll let you go to what you're going to say.
No, I mean, I don't, I was just going to address that. I do think we need to define who the student should go to. I think that that needs to be a little more clear in what we have written. And I don't know-
What we got from Charlotte MECC, they chose the social worker, because the social worker would probably have a better understanding of how to work with the parent, as well as the student around the needs of the students in this situation. And we wanted, and what they chose, and what we talked about, was we wanted it to be one person. We didn't want, because we have to, this is a delicate situation.
Yeah.
We don't know where parents are in their thought process as far as people knowing, and I know when we say people, we're talking about school officials, but you still don't know what, where parents are around everybody, knowing what's happening with their child, right? And how they are processing and dealing with it. So we felt like one person needed to be that contact person, just like on the district level, one person needed to be that person, so that everybody under the moon didn't get a copy of this child changing their name.
Right. So should I take out student support specialist and just say the administrator and school social worker?
So let me just jump in here. Do you think that every social worker that you have in every school is up to this, or do we want to leave room for the administrator to choose someone who is most supportive?
All, yes, all social workers are up to this. That's why I chose the social workers, because they are, when we did our training as well, they were all a part of that training, very supportive of that. Now, you know, everybody has their different views, right? But the social workers, I felt like were, are, let me say, the ones that could provide the support, along with the school administration. And they'd be the one that would have access to the student records and those kinds of things in that building.
Okay.
So Eva, do you have a recommendation of what the, you know, I, I think it's really encouraging to hear that all the social workers are up for it and trained for that right now, but just, if this is going to be an enduring policy, do we leave wiggle room for that to shift, or do we define it more tightly right now? What, what do you, what's your advice legally?
I think it's up to you guys. I think if you want to put social, instead of student support specialist, i.e. push, you know, just put social worker, if, if you prefer. I don't have a strong feeling about it. In many districts, they don't have a social worker in every school, but you do, so.
Doyle, Ms. Smiley, thoughts? Dr. Keeling, anybody want to?
Well, I could see, like, a student, you know, if, if there's the teacher who's the GSA leader, they might instinctively go to that person or that, you know, safe space, but that person could still, I guess, bring them or point them to the social worker or do it with them, or, that's the type of thing I'm imagining. I don't know if that's how it would work.
I certainly wouldn't think this would limit who could be there.
Yeah, this is just about who's going to have that meeting, right? And I, I think if Ms. Cobb is saying the school social workers are the ones who are, like, officially trained to do this, then like, that's, that's, I'm fine with taking out these other roles for this.
Okay. And I, and then I think if they, yeah, want to bring other people, then that's great, too.
Can I ask a question in the next paragraph? Are we ready to go there?
Yeah, we're ready.
Okay. So the next paragraph is the one that talks about, you know, not all students are out to their families. And basically, that these situations need to be addressed case by case, and the principal, or their designation, confirmed director of student services. I guess I'm just wondering if there's more we need to say here. And, like, are we, we're clear internally on how to proceed in situations like that? I'm wondering if, if, if there are certain things that we know now about that, if we should put them in the policy or not? How do we handle these case-by-case situations like this?
So, again, I think this Cobb can speak, but, yeah, one of, one of the things for me in the paragraph above is that it said, like, sometimes, in other cases, the student may come and say that, inform the school about their transition, and then the next sentence says that the parents would be contacted, and then it's not until, I mean, the next sentence says that, but then it's not until the next paragraph where it's like, I might not feel comfortable. And so I just wondered, you know, I'm thinking, like, would someone, I guess, we will have to train them in the process, but I just wonder if it's the student that comes to the administrator, if that's the first place is to have that conversation with the student, instead of, you know, you'll contact the parents, and then you get to the point where it's like, oh, but there may be some students who don't want their parents to know. That's kind of my train of thought, and it does speak to us training them, but.
I think that's, you know, I think that's an important point, and wonder if there is a place, sort of in this, the administrator and school social worker should meet with the parents, if there's some language we should add there around.
So I will tell you right now what happens if a student goes to an administrator and/or to the social worker and says, you know, I'm transitioning, I need support, or what have you. The social worker will counsel with that student, find out, like, how far along they are in the process, as far as who knows, if parents know, if your parents know, where are they in their thought process? Are they accepting? You know, try to help the student process through that. The, as the school principal, then what happens is the principal will contact me and say, Ms. Cobb, we have this student that has this trend, is in this transition, we need support with that. Then I show up with a gender support plan, a process with the principal, with the student, and with the parent. And that's why that gender support plan is so important, because in that, we talk to the parent through, like, what is it that you would like to see? Are you in a place that you are ready to move to be open about this? As well as providing them with some resources that the parent can have to, to help them counsel through and be able to deal with what's going on and support their student. So when that last sentence said, you know, that talks about confirming with me, that's what we do. When they call me, we set up a time to meet with that parent, we go over that gender plan, we talk about what the parent expects, what the parent is ready to handle, and then resources for that parent, and resources for that student, and how we will support that kid throughout the school day while they're there.
So Ms. Cobb, if a student comes to a counselor, say, and says, I'm transitioning, but my parents don't know and can't know, we're not going to call their parents in that scenario, are we?
No. What we would do is the staff would then work together to provide a plan for that student, of support for that student. We don't make that call, that student has that decision to make, and so we support that kid around that transition, because it's, it's something new and something different for them, too. So we help them process what they're feeling, what they're going through. And now, if they say, I want help letting my parent know, then we would set up a meeting to have that parent come in and sit with that student to work through that process.
And I, I do want to jump, just to, and I know that your staff know this, but the, I, I almost want to mention here that staff ought to be mindful that any documents they create, parents have a right to request. So if there's a written gender support plan, it can't be kept a secret. Legally, we can't do that unless the child's emancipated or, so, you know, just-
And we share those things with the student, that certain things will have to be shared with, we do share that information with them as well. Thank you, Eva.
We just have a shorter menu of things we can offer them if their parents are not involved.
So I almost feel like that's, yeah, I think we're going to the same place, which is, I almost wonder if we should just say that more explicitly here, like, because, you know, parents of minor children have access to XYZ, students who wish to keep this, their transition, private from their parents will have a more limited, I, I don't, I mean, if that's like the legal reality, I feel like maybe just, I don't know, I'm curious what other people think about, like, explicitly saying that here, or like, sharing that later.
I think it's important for students to know exactly what their rights are and what it means if they go and create a student support plan. I mean, if that means three months later, their parents are going to have a printed copy, or could have a printed copy, they need to know that. I mean, it's tricky, but...
So, there's, think about this.
So I put in italics just what I'm brainstorming, and I, I'll stop doing this, Hillary, if it's bothering you.
No, not at all. I'm grateful. Thank you.
It's a draft. Ms. Cobb or Dr. Keeling? Oh, great, here it is.
Yeah, I was just going to ask Eva. So, do we have to say that in policy? Because what I'm wondering is, gosh, this is going to sound like I'm being sneaky, but it's like, now the parent would know, I suspect something is going on, and now I have, now I'm going to go to the school and ask about that, whereas before, it was kind of like, I might have been oblivious. I don't, I don't know the right way to say that.
I, I know, I know what you're saying, like, what you advertised. I think the balancing here is, I mean, first of all, you're assuming that there's a parent who would read this policy but not have read the records policy. But we're balancing it against wanting our students who are reading this policy to know that and not be caught off guard or, or staff.
I think I defer, I, I'd like to defer to empowering our students with information. I mean, I totally hear your point, Dina, and think it's really important and know where you're coming from. But I, I feel like most of the students who are going to be reading this would be high school students. I don't know, maybe that's not right, but...
And I definitely wanted them to know their rights. I think I, and as we draft the plan for them, that that wording is in the plan, so they know, listen, if we go through this process of writing this plan, you know that your parents could see this. So it definitely wasn't to hide information from the-
I know.
Yeah, no, I was trying to, like, make sure I knew, like, I was working how I, my question around it, right?
Totally get where you're coming from. So, go ahead.
I don't want to interrupt, but if you go to that, a little bit higher up in the paragraph, where, sentence that starts with the administrator and school social worker, what if it said something like, because it had said that it might be the parent who approaches first, and maybe that's more common in elementary, I don't know, but if it said, should meet with, you know, the, the parent or student who approaches them about it, or something to indicate, like, because it seems like we were saying with Dr. Keeling that it, it should be they meet with the students and not the parent right off the bat. It's, that I think that it's reflecting the fact that sometimes the parent is the one who approaches about the child's transition.
I, I wonder if this sentence could just be moved to after, in some cases, a parent will approach a school or district administrator about their child's transition, administrator da-da-da-da would then meet with the parents and student. And then, in other cases, the student is the person who informs this school about their transition.
So just taking this out and moving it down?
Yep. Yeah, as they're sort of different scenarios. And then, like, taking the student sentence, putting it before the italics, but then also potentially-
The one I just cut it?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then potentially even this, the next paragraph about, in other cases, the student is in, da-da-da-da, school social should be mindful that sometimes they haven't talked to their parents. Sort of combining, so the framing being the student, sometimes the person who informs the school about the transition, and there's a way to merge that, the paragraph below about sometimes they have, experiencing family challenges, and da-da-da, and then the italicized text, something like that.
Okay, so taking all of this and putting it-
A new paragraph, yeah, like, maybe that's a new paragraph. And the paragraph that's below it.
Uh huh.
Moving it to be the second sentence and-
Okay.
If that makes sense.
So putting it here. Is that what you mean? Is that what you mean?
Yes.
Like that? Yes?
Yes.
I wonder if it's worth adding where it says significant family challenges, um, including homelessness. Um, I don't know if that's big sense to add in the policy, but.
What do you all think? I'm kind of inclined to think there are like a lot of challenges. I, and that's definitely like one of them, but I think there are a number, like adult challenges and a bunch of things. So I'm kind of inclined to keep it simple.
Yeah. And I, I also think that it's not, the homelessness isn't sort of the challenge that we're thinking about in this particular paragraph. You know, because I think that, I mean homelessness is obviously such a huge problem and very, very serious, but the, the reason we're talking about significant family challenges here is about whether their parents would be involved in creating a gender support plan and being sort of involved in the school plan. Does that make sense? I don't know. Do you feel strongly about it, Carrie? Do you want to keep?
No, I'm just, I guess my motivation was just wanting people to, like, I guess that's more of a, a tr- just making sure that people are on board with not wanting to put students at risk. But I don't know that that is, makes sense to have in the policy. Just was not my mind.
I think if that's not named in the, I think there's an earlier section about some of the, um, effects of non-inclusive, you know, the risks forced trans students up in kind of the framing. Maybe there is or isn't. I mean, there's, there are a number of other like, um, bad effects when students' gender identity isn't affirmed or like risks that kids experience. So we could potentially consider including more of that there.
Mm hmm. So maybe, let's see.
Although what I like about the way it's framed there is that it really is about school culture. And so naming some of those other things may. Take away from that.
Kind of buddies the, sort of other things outside of school that they might be experiencing as a consequence as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I take your point.
I did have one thought back in that paragraph we were just thinking of.
I'm sorry, which paragraph are we just, the one up here, at the beginning?
No, 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 sorry. Oh, sorry. I was moving back to the other language. Involving parents. Are we, are we ready to do that or?
That's fine. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, is this, where were we?
Oh, that's a totally different paragraph about it. No, um.
I'm, I'm getting there. Here, this.
Yes. Um, so I thought, like, given the way this is framed now, the school, the next sentence after the one where the cursor is, the school principal or designee should speak with the student first to ascertain concerns the student may have. Maybe something like.
Let me figure out where you.
Do you see that where the blinking cursor is?
Yes.
There's a blinking one. Okay. So after, yes. So there, um, like adding a phrase at the end, speak with them to ascertain concerns the students may have and how best to, how and whether to, how best to involve their parents or guardians, family, whatever, something, something about.
Yeah. And then we don't need the first sentence in italics.
Okay. So. And how best to include.
I guess that kind of implies that that they will be included and so.
What if you just took the language from below about how the student can be safe and supported at school period?
Eva, do you mind doing that?
I do not.
Yeah, no, my thought was actually in adding this was, um, it is that, so the paragraph starts with in other cases, the student's the person who informs the school about their transition. In some of those cases, the student may also be fine with involving their parents, right? Um, but the rest of the paragraph is all about situations where I wanted to add in reference to the fact that students may bring it up, but may want to involve their parents. That was sort of my intent.
How about, how about that?
I like that.
Yep.
I think that's good. So. Go ahead.
Yeah. There was something that I liked about the previous italics one about how to best support them in school and stuff that feels missing there now. So maybe we could add a little bit more about that back in. Looking Google history of edits, you can like.
Yeah.
I mean, we could add just, if we want to keep talking, we could just make a note to add something about that.
Eva, are you working on that area?
Yeah, I'm thinking.
Is it okay if I go down and? Okay, cool. So I'm gonna go down to the names and pronouns section now and there's a preferred, where is it? Uh, right here. Not chosen. Should we use cho- did we use chosen earlier or affirmed? I remember. Okay.
There's kind of a double choice there. And it'd be or.
Okay, got it. Or chosen name. Okay. Is that, so some people had requested, we kind of outlined what might happen if, if this policy isn't adhered to. And I wonder if this is a place where we can reference um, sort of steps to take if it's not.
Yeah, it, I mean, is it something that if, if this were to happen, would that be, um, handled via the harassment and bullying policy or a different employment policy? Um, maybe there's just an opportunity to reference what policy would be followed if, if somebody intentionally and persistently refuses to respect these things.
Sounds like the bullying wouldn't be, it does, it does make a reference in that one to, um, disciplinary measures if staff don't address it or something.
Eva, do you have a thought about which policy it might be?
Well, I mean, it, it depends on who you're talking about. Obviously, I guess here we are generally talking about staff.
But so we would expect students to adhere to the policy also though, for their peers.
Yes. Yeah, yeah. I think, um, what we would address with discipline in students is conduct that crosses the line into bullying, as you said, or harassment. And and I think that's already against the rules. Um, hmm, I'm just thinking about, I mean, I, I understand what you want to say that it's, it's prohibited and may be subject to discipline. I'm just.
But could we say this would be defined as bullying and harassment?
Under policy seventeen ten or whatever it is.
Mm hmm.
I guess you could say is prohibited and may constitute bullying slash harassment under policy seventeen ten.
The, um, I have that policy open and, um, it says sections reporting and ameliorating complaints of discrimination, harassment or bullying. I mean, I think any of those words seem to apply. Discrimination, harassment or.
Under policy seventeen ten?
Mm hmm. I wonder if the word refusal to respect a student's or staff members' gender identity or chosen name or prof- I wonder if instead of respect, it's like, um, recognize and use or something. I don't, respect is like an internal, do I know your mind and heart?
Right.
Yeah, even just use.
Eva, what do you recommend from a legal standpoint? Recognize?
Um, I know what you mean, but I'm not sure I have a better word. Um, I mean, what, yeah, as you said, is, it's used as an action, but, um, but recognize can also be sort of a passive word and I'm not sure that's.
Recognize and use?
Like you don't really use a gender identity.
I think I like respect.
Okay.
Although I know what you mean.
Okay. Um, let's see here.
Okay, just to belabor the point, I mean, I guess honor you would be used in that type of way a lot, you know, like honor, you honor someone's request or you honor name they want to be called, but anyway.
Thoughts?
I don't have a strong opinion. That makes sense too.
Eva, do you have any, uh, legal preference?
Um, I mean, none of these really. I think honor could be interpreted to mean celebrate in some way and, and um,
Yeah.
I'll keep thinking about it.
Okay. Employees entitled. Um, okay, so. One second. Employees are entitled to have their preferred name appear on all unofficial records. Staff requests should be submitted to Director of.
Resources, probably?
Director of Human Resources.
Teresa. Or it's Chief Human Resources Officer, excuse me.
Or their designee maybe? Or no?
Uh, designee's fine, yeah.
Everybody okay with that? Um, let's see. Student records. So my question here, Eva, um, has to do with parental consent again, because I was talking to one of our, um, performing arts teachers and they were talking about how sometimes in programs, students want their preferred names or their affirmed names, excuse me, and their parents want their birth names. What are we saying and what, I, I mean, I personally would like to defer to what the student wants, but, um, I'm wondering from a legal standpoint.
If they are minors, I think at that point I'd have to go with the parent. You know, I don't think you have to ask parent permission each time, but if they proactively get involved.
Right.
You know, as they're.
So we can leave it as is. Schools must use the name and gender that is preferred and consistently asserted at school, but then it, just if that's challenged, we would probably have to defer to parents. Okay. Um, to request a new email address, principals should submit a request to, Dr. Feller had put Joe Schofield, but I feel like that specific of a, um, person probably shouldn't be listed in policy. So, um, I wonder if no. I'm sorry, Eva, what did you say?
What is Joe's title?
I don't know that.
Is he? I'm just looking at the emails, but.
Technician two.
So to a, to the technology department?
Okay.
So I have a question. Because I'm wondering if part of the process that the students go, when they meet with their, uh, social worker, that that's part of the plan. It's like, I want my email changed, my name changed, et cetera. Um, I think what we're trying to do is head off a, uh, a situation where the student has not had a conversation with anyone and just submit something to Joe and he just does it. He has no idea like what, what just happened. I just got a request. So I'm, I'm wondering if it needs to be more streamlined, that this is all part of your, your process that you go through with the social worker. And then the social worker can have the conversation with Joe and, um, maybe Ms. Ball to change power schools. So that's part of how the process might be.
Yes, Dana, that is exactly what, um, that process would do. So if that, when that student comes and they do the, um, chosen name form that we are compiling, working on, completing, um, in that can change everything, including their email. So that, that all of that would happen, but that, that is under the guise that the parent is on board and and is accepting and, and has given the okay for all of that to take place.
So what?
So that, that email doesn't change unless that part has been approved by the parent.
Yeah, I'm sorry for interrupting you. Um, what if you, to request a new email address as part of a gender support plan? Would that address to make it, that it's part of that process?
Eva, do you mind making that change? I'm trying to help someone get into the meeting who wants to, and I need to reach out to Ms. Stowe to see if she can help them. Sorry, everyone.
Thank you, um, with Hillary, because that's exactly what I, I just got a text saying the same thing.
All right, y'all, I'll be right back with. Okay, I'm gonna try to just keep going and if I have to follow back up, I may have to look down again.
The sentence above, the one that was just edited or two sentences above, is that how it got less, schools must use the name and gender that is preferred? So that's what, that was with the comment about things like, um, programs and whatnot.
I think.
It should stay like that unless, unless the parent asserts other. It should stay like that unless, unless the parent asserts otherwise?
Right, so, we would default to going ahead and printing it a certain way, but if parents intervene, we would have to defer to that.
But if a parent intervenes and the school looks at this, do they know that the parent-- Yeah, I guess so.
You just want to add, "If possible," must use if possible?
I mean, we kind of want to add that. No, no, okay. That does make it way too broad, yeah, yeah, let's just, yeah, let's leave it like this.
Okay. So, I don't have any changes for these sections, so just stop me or tell me to go back if I'm skipping over something we want to talk about. Um, I had more of a question, um, where we get to medical records. Um, I'm just gonna read this section, "In the case of a transgender student, a school nurse should use the student's preferred name," which I guess I need to change that, too. Um, "And should use the student's legal name only when necessary for the student to receive appropriate," oh, wait, no, hold on, I'm wrong. Sorry. Glad I found that, but that isn't actually where I was going. Okay, "Students must, uh, under sports and physical education, students must be permitted to participate in physical education and intramural sports in accordance with the student's gender identity that is consistently asserted at school. Participation in competitive athletic activities and contact sports will be resolved on a case-by-case basis." So, I have some, um, when I got feedback, I had some questions around, like, what's the difference, what does that mean? What are we saying here?
Is that any high school athletic association sanctioned sports? That decision about which team you play on is made by the athletic association and not by us, and they have a, they have a committee and a process and an application.
Would you mind adding some language about that in there, just so there's a little bit of clarity for folks who--
Maybe we just don't need that sentence, because there's this sentence above it, like the paragraph above it, "Interscholastic athletics according to those rules." And then there's a sentence about phys ed and intramural sports. And so, do those two together cover, like, competitive activities or the interscholastic athletics, right?
I, I kind of would want some feedback from, I don't know a lot about sports, and, um, you know, like, what might come up, like wrestling, I, you know, I just don't know all the things that an A.D. might be worried about here.
Could we just maybe, um, say that you'll kind of look up, look into that and kind of update with a little more clarity? So then, really, the last piece that I have, um, direct feedback about, although there may be some other things we want to talk about, of course, is just this last piece about whether we wanted to add any professional development for support staffs or nurses. I'm sorry, I'm getting texts about people getting in, I'm nervous. Okay, um-- I don't know if you want to--
Website does have--
--or not. Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, I was just gonna say the website does have a link to join the meeting now.
Yeah, it doesn't have an access code, though. But hopefully Melanie can update that. Okay, so, under professional development, is this all we want to say? Do we want to add?
Sorry to interrupt, just so everyone knows, the access code for the meeting is in the email with the original links that were sent out yesterday.
Joe, do you think you could update the public page? I mean, I can't go into my email and send that to someone in the middle of the meeting.
I don't have access to update the website.
Can you ask Melanie to do that, please?
Yeah, I can do that.
Thank you.
You include the, the part about nurses? I'm just mentioning it, because we mentioned it earlier, I don't have a preference, but we talked about that with the training piece, the professional development.
Mm-hmm. Um, I'm not really sure who would make that call, I don't know if that's Dr. Felder, if Ms. Cobb has feelings about that. I don't know.
I think it might be best if we could say, um, um, student support services in general, and that would include counselors, nurses, and social workers, because all of them will play a role, because if, um, depending on the way that the school building is set up, the student may need to use the restroom in the nurse's office, and so, support is needed in that effort, you know, from the nurses, or if it's a restroom in the counseling, um, wing of the building, then that may be where the student may, um, go and use the restroom, or, um, need to, um, change clothes, or if there's medication administration that needs to happen. So, that's, I, I think it would just be, um, best to say student support services, which includes counselors, nurses, and social workers.
Well, uh, we'll receive professional development around how to support, um, this pop, yeah, implementation of this policy, and--
Correct, and I, I'm gonna be in contact with UNC, um, today to try to set up some more training.
Awesome, thank you so much. Um, Sarah, do you have any thoughts about how we would word this?
Um, I just wonder if, given the way that, um, Sridha works with that group of staff members, if it might be, we just include this group in number one. So, number one is about periodic training to all school-based administrators and appropriate district-level administrators, and maybe as well as student support services across the district, which includes, if, if Ms. Cobb, if that's the way that it would actually work, um, if their training would be done a little bit more centrally.
Okay, so I totally missed what you said, because I'm still trying to navigate getting people--
That is okay, okay, so, my suggestion was, because of the way, um, Ms. Cobb coordinates, um, this professional development for student support services, I just thought we could take this group and add them to the list of number one.
Oh, yeah.
There's sort of these core, like, the administration, student support services, the district's gonna make sure that they all get trained, and then the principals are making sure that the rest of the school staff are, um, provided school-level training.
Student support services, would that be capitalized? Someone?
I'm not sure.
Yes. Okay. Really? Does that look good to everyone? All right, so that's the, this, those are the specific edits I had, though I realize we may have more to discuss, and there's, um, pages of feedback we could probably still review. Um, Dr. Keeling, if you're, are you on here still?
Yes, I'm here.
Um, do you think you could walk us through the feedback from New Hope Equity Team?
Sure, I think you've covered most of it, I was going along--
Yeah.
--their markups while you were going through.
If you could just highlight anything we didn't hit, that would be awesome, because I just started right before the meeting, I didn't have time to, like, go listen, analyze what we would have been hitting.
Right, um, the other thing was, um, OCS staff playing a central role in creating a supportive school culture, I think this is at the very beginning, and it said, "Can we include information about how OCS staff will be provided protection for creating this supportive environment? How will OCS staff feel supported and comfortable in doing so?" Again, I don't know if all this is around policy, but I'm just, um, giving voice to what they said. Um, "Are there specific protections for all LGBTQIA+ students? How can this policy be adapted in the future to include more specific protections against sexual orientation?" And I don't know, as we went through, that, um, we added some more specific wording. Um, "Train, who trains the principals? Um, moving away from preferred names, they felt that it was offensive and using affirmed names instead," or is there other way that we could phrase this?
We got that.
"Under the names and pronouns, what specific action will be taken if staff refuse to respect?" I think we discussed that also. Um, "Teachers and others," there's a sentence that says, "Teachers and other school staff, including substitutes and volunteers, should be made aware and honor the student's request." And it, it says, "Honor the student's requests to be referred to by the name and gender that corresponds to their gender identity." And they said, "The use of the word 'corresponds' indicates a binary system and puts pressure on students to ensure their name matches the way they express their gender identity. Would it be better to simply say, 'Teachers and other school staff, including subs and volunteers, should be made aware and honor a student's request to be referred to by the name and gender that they desire and identify with.'" So, I don't know if we addressed that. Or if we, what the thoughts were around that. Um, another one was under the medical records section, and, um, can we, well, can we identify specific scenarios where the school nurse would need to use a student's legal name over their preferred name? What does that actually look like? I guess-- So, it, it's wording that says, "In the case of a transgender student, under med, under the medical records section, a school nurse should use the student's preferred name and should use the student's legal name only when necessary for the student to receive appropriate care and to enable school nurse to coordinate care for the student with other healthcare professionals," as well as insurance, I guess that is specific, but I'm not sure.
I think, yeah, I think it's just about medical records and make sure that insurance is filed correctly.
Um, there was a question around the use of the term "consistently asserted," it said, they said that it's used throughout the guidelines, but what does that actually mean? Will this term allow for staff to invol, invalidate a student's identity because they are just recently discussing or discovering it, having talked about it before, having presented their, their gender in a way that is perceived or congruent with the identity in the past?
Eva, could you speak to that a little bit? I mean, I think that's the fear with that statement.
I, I do understand that, um, I, I think you have to look at the system that you've created as a whole, and whether it creates an opportunity, really, for someone to say, "Well, I don't think you've been consistent." I don't think it does, because you're drafting these gender support plans, and, I mean, I guess this is all a balancing act, and so, my concern is, there does need to be some way to eliminate non-serious efforts. I mean, that's, that is a concern that some folks have, I don't think it happens as often as some might fear it does, but, you know, like we've talked about, we can't have IT flooded with name change requests for emails that aren't related to a true gender identity transition, you know? So, it's just a balance, um, of having some sort of threshold. And I think, I, I do understand that people may not have been expressing, you know, that they start in different places. Um, I don't know, I don't think it's unreasonable to suggest that first you begin asserting in some way your transition, and then we have these official changes, rather than the other way around.
Is there a way for us to include some language, like, "Any student who wishes to create a gender support plan is entitled to that" process, or some, something like that somewhere?
Are they?
Aren't they? I don't know.
I just don't want to put ourselves in a position of folks trying to mess with the system, like, you know, with bogus requests, that thus making it harder for people with genuine requests.
I guess I, you know, I, I weigh the challenge associated with that, with the risk of alienating a student that wants support, and I don't, I don't know what the right answer is, or how those play against each other with this, but--
Well--
I mean, I just want to feel it. Oh, go ahead.
Well, I guess I'm thinking about, it, it seems the fear is that a, a staff member might use this term as an, a barrier, and I think that we can address that without taking out the term, but saying, you know, and I, I, I'm gonna have to think about it a little bit, but just some statement that, you know, in the part of, in the, in the part where that talks about students approaching staff, seeking help, that staff should not, you know, turn away students based on, and I don't know.
Perceived, um, consistently asserted, something, yeah. There's something about that that makes sense to me, like, that, I think by putting out this big old policy in the first place, we're, we're like saying, um, I don't know, there's, there's, there's an assumed orientation, I think, here, for me, that's like, believe what students tell you about themselves, and so, um, maybe there's some way to make sure that staff aren't using that, like, consistently asserted as, like, a litmus test screening, that barrier-creating thing.
But I do think it's fair that to require some consistency when you're talking about changing someone's records, um, and you're talking about children or adolescents. I, I do, I don't think it's unreasonable to require some consistency there, you know, we, that doesn't mean you can't be inconsistent personally, but we're a bureaucracy that, you know, has some, um, baseline requirements that, you know, paperwork stuff we have to do.
Okay, there were just a couple more points. Another was, "How can federature media and other content be utilized to validate and recognize students' gender identity and sexual orientation?" Um, I don't know if that speaks to this policy, or something sounds like making sure that there's, like, culturally relevant teaching, that that's part of, um, what we include. Um, about the reporting harassment and discrimination, I, I think we feel comfortable that we've addressed that. Um, the need for students to be assessed on a case-by-case basis, what assessment tool, but I think that goes to our gender support plan. Um, "Using supporting transgender transitioning stu," under "Supporting transgender or transitioning students," there is a sentence, "Transgender youth who are in the process of social gender transition-- There is a sentence, transgender youth who are in the process of social gender transition often choose a new first name and the gender pronoun that better reflects their gender identity. They may or may not begin to dress and style their hair in a way that better reflects. And the comment was around better reflects. Put a term that just says expresses.
Yep, I got that one.
Got it, okay, sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
I didn't see that one. And then also under there, omitting the third paragraph, speaking about students' bodies like this seems too invasive and too personal.
I'm sorry, what?
Under supporting transgender or transitioning students. And paragraph about students' bodies? The third paragraph, I don't know if we.
Some transgender youth are also reaching puberty.
They didn't specify, and let me look at the edits to see if it was something specific in Yeah. I'm assuming, because that is highlighted under students at puberty. And the comment was just made, um, speaking about students' bodies like this seems too invasive and too personal. When else would we speak about students this explicitly in policy? That was the last comment.
That feels like a useful comment. And I guess I'm wondering, um, what is the purpose of this paragraph? Like, we did add something, right, about chest binding? And to me, part of the value of this was like a bit educational and a bit of a like reference to like, there might be some medical implications for, about student health. But also, are there other policies where we refer to like real specific? I don't know. I'm, I don't know what to do with it, but I think it's a useful question.
Well, it seems like the expectation that there will be support for those things, like, you know, the school nurse or, I, I don't know if there are things like that in kids with special needs or other medical situations?
I'm not sure. Eva, are you familiar with where we might reference student bodies in, um, policy other than this?
Not in this way. I think that this was meant to be educational. I do not think that it is critical. It, it, it is, it doesn't function as directing anyone to do one thing or another. It's just background education. And if it makes people feel uncomfortable, I don't think it's critical.
Well, I mean, we could just delete the whole paragraph.
We could. If we think we might be getting input from additional like GSAs and things, we could like flag it as a question. You know, the trade-off being like educational versus, um, you know, speaking about health and student bodies.
Yeah. I mean, I do think that there are educational pieces in our policies throughout the policy manual. I mean, maybe not specifically about student bodies, but but you know, there are drops of information about why we are creating certain policies. But yeah, I, I'm all for getting more feedback and going from there. So. I think those were the main changes and things that we had to discuss for this one. Eva had one, um.
Section you were gonna add, right? I'm trying to find my note on what that was at this point.
I did edit.
Where did I do it?
While Eva's finding that, Dr. Healing had one other piece of feedback from, um, that she was just reading earlier about the staff and volunteers. There was a suggested language change, and I cannot find the, oh, I think it's under names and pronouns, maybe? I thought that that sometimes I, I can like understand things better when I see them, but that seemed like potentially a good language change there.
Dr. Healing, would you mind repeating that piece of feedback, please?
Was it, um, instead of preferred name, affirmed name?
It was, teachers and other school staff, including substitutes and volunteers, request to be referred to name and gender that corresponds. There was something different there.
Right. Um, the use of the word corresponds indicates a binary system and puts pressure on students to ensure that they match it the way they express their gender identity.
And was there a different phrasing suggested?
Teachers and other school staff, including subs and volunteers, should be made aware of and honor of students' requests to be referred to by the name and gender that they desire and identify with.
I'm fine with that. I'll just put it in, then we can talk about. Not sure that we want to end it with, with, but.
So do we want that to be the requirement, even if it has nothing to do with gender identity? Even if they just don't want to be called Charlotte anymore and want to be called Melissa? I think that's sort of what the. I mean, we have name and gender. I guess I'm not sure how saying that something corresponds with your gender identity is binary because your name could correspond with your identity as a binary.
Yeah.
I mean, if, if it's the word, if we change it to aligns with your gender identity, it's just this policy is about people who are undergoing some sort of gender identity transition, not necessarily people who don't, who want to change their name.
By the name and pronouns that align with their gender identity?
That's good. That, that's right, because you do, you refer to someone by their pronoun, not by their gender.
Right.
I think the question is around, what if the name doesn't appear to some to correspond? Like, you might choose a name and it doesn't have anything, like, it doesn't necessarily look like it's corresponding with your gender identity. It's just.
I mean, like if I want to go by Bob.
Right. Even if, you know, people consider that to be male, but I'm transitioning to female, or that's what I, that's whatever I want to desire correspond in a way that makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, to honor their request. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that's what I was gonna say. I do think that because it's like where the, the like core of it is, there, they should honor a student's request, right? So like, if that, if, whatever that name is, um, in the context of this sort of, um, gender transition. So to me, that, that sort of, that, that, that piece of it around, the, the point of the sentence is honoring the student's request is, it lowers my concern about the thing that you're sharing.
I mean, I hear the concern that someone might say, well, you're requesting a name that doesn't align with your gender identity. I think, I don't know. I would hope it would be clear that it's the requested name.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we have any sort of litmus test for passing or like what we would accept as a chosen name. And we've used, and we've used the word chosen in several places in this policy. So I wouldn't think there was any sort of legal requirement for what it, that some imaginary test of passing one gender or the other.
I don't, I don't think that would fly.
Yeah.
I do think I could hear someone making that comment. Like, what, you're, you're changing to a female, but you're still going by Bob? Like, and I think that's kind of where it's like, that doesn't align. You know, I think that's where it's kind of heading off. Like, don't ask me why I chose the name I've chosen, it's what I choose.
So how can we capture that? Does anyone have any suggestions for that? So, we just changed that. That aligns. I guess that's the problematic verbiage.
What about just ending after pronouns?
Like, just ending this sentence here, addressed by.
I'm looking, I'm down.
I'm sorry, you broke up Carrie.
I'm sorry, Hillary. I'm, I'm looking at the next paragraph. I'm looking like three lines down.
Okay.
Name and pronouns that align with their gender.
So could we have the sentence just say, every student and staff member is entitled to be addressed by their chosen name and pronoun? And end it.
I don't think they are, no.
And, and that is what we are, we've said that all throughout, so we're just affirming that it is a chosen name and pronoun.
Yeah, adding the word chosen, I agree with, but I just, I, I don't think that you are saying that everyone is entitled to be addressed by whatever they come up with, regardless of whether it's related to their gender identity needs. This policy is specific for people whose name change or desire is related to their gender identity needs. It's a gender support policy. But.
What if we said?
Something to make it clear that it's the name and pronouns that they say are aligned to their gender, not that we determine.
What if we just said that aligns to their identity?
I think for me, the question comes like, who determines what aligns?
As they define it? Could we say like, as they define it?
They, yeah.
So as they define it here, their gender identity as they define it?
How about their gender identity that's consistently asserted? What I want to put in here is just, they're entitled to be addressed by the name and pronoun they request in the context of this gender support policy.
The, the question was around where Ms. Doyle was, the, a couple sentences down. It wasn't.
I think, I think it's often intertwined, though. Students are not required to.
Could we say, um, this, what, what Ms. Dubison was suggesting in the context of this policy or something like that?
You go ahead, Eva.
I'm thinking, yeah.
Just FYI, that first sentence, where every student and staff member is entitled to be addressed. However, it wasn't actually worded, uh, on the, there was a check and an amen next to that sentence, so.
This is pretty much the same.
Does that make it clear that we're not assigning it to them?
It does seem enough.
I think so. Um, but instead of name and pronoun preferences, can we ta- take it to affirmed or their own, well, identifying their chosen name and. This is tricky stuff.
I think you can just say name.
Okay. Awesome. So then, let's make sure that's in alignment with the next paragraph. Students are not required to obtain. Sorry, I'm reading everyone. Just jump in if anyone wants to say anything.
One other aspect of the policy that, um, Dr. Healing had brought up that I'm curious if we think is strong enough is, um, this idea of the policy having more of a commitment to not outing students? And I know we talked in that section about if a student, you know, is the one to raise the issue, how that will be handled. And so I, hopefully that is like clearer and, and feels strong there. I, I wonder if there's something anywhere else that could sort of strengthen that emphasis?
Sarah, I'm so sorry. Can you say that one more time?
Yeah, so one of the things was this commitment to not outing students and, and desire to want that be stronger. And I'm just wondering if there is a, if there is another place where we should do that? Is there a sentence we could strengthen or add somewhere? Maybe in the privacy section? I'm not quite sure where, but.
So I wonder if there is a way that we can, um, sort of add a paragraph that, um, states how staff can work to be supportive in specific ways that students ask for? I don't know. I'm just, I'm trying to think if there's like a, you know, we listen to what individual students say that they need, but I guess that's all part of the gender support plan. I was trying to get back around to your point, but I think I'm not doing a good job of that. Yeah. Eva, can you think of a place that would be appropriate to add, to strengthen language around not outing students and how we can avoid that? Eva, you're muted. I, I think you're talking.
Yes, aha. Um, if we go. Yes. Uh huh. If we go back to page four. Um, in the middle is where I. In the paragraph that starts in other cases. And um, this is the section that I updated. You can see I highlighted it there while you guys had moved on. So that's where we addressed it. And I added the phrase, what support may be needed to keep the student safe at school? And then it says whether to involve the parents if at all. Um. I. I just don't know that I can say you're not permitted to out students because again, this is a A through 12 policy. And that covers a lot of situations. Um, I certainly, you know, we don't encourage it, but.
Is there something about like, um, seeking to understand from students? Their. Preferences? Yeah, I'm not sure.
You mean like schools will try to support the student's desired level of privacy or confidentiality or, I don't know.
Yeah. I mean, maybe if, if that is one of the things that are covered in a gender support plan, then maybe we don't need to address it more closely here. Or maybe when referencing the gender support plan, we can reference that that's one of the things discussed.
That makes sense. It's, if it's more detailed in there.
Let's see where my.
So would that be under?
You know what? Sorry, I, I may be taking. I do feel like there's something here. It isn't, um, it isn't sort of like blaring and, and obvious. And so maybe there's a, I mean, maybe it is too varied, but in the, in the section where it talks about basically the paragraph right before the one we were just in. Um, it's not unusual for a child's desire to transition to first surface in school. When we talk about this formal gender transition, putting in place measures to support this child and create a sensitive supportive environment at school. Um, it says this meeting should include, but not be limited to discussion of the timing of the transition, planned responses to questions from school staff and students. So this is, that sort of addresses. What is the students and if their parents are in the conversation, what is their, what are their preferences for? Who knows when? That's what I'm taking that to mean.
Yeah. I think that's right. This is not consistent. Okay. So do you think that that kind of captures what you were?
I think it might. I'm curious. I'm curious, Dr. Keeling, if you think it might do enough to respond to this feedback or if there's something else. There is sort of like a general like, we want our staff to take care with, with this knowledge that they have and, you know, and be acting in accordance with students' gender support plans, which might include not outing them to their peers if they're not out to their peers yet or whatever. And I'm, I'm.
I think part of the issue is not having seen the gender support plan. It's hard for us to know how, how it will work exactly with staff and how much it will inform how each student is, um, each situation is treated. So do we have, I, I don't know if we've. Oh, hold on. I've been signed out. Sorry.
I can, um, I can share the one that we are looking at and working on if you would like. I can share it with you and then you can, um, display it here for, if you want to look at it and kind of walk through it, or I can send it to you for you to review.
Maybe you could just send it to the board and, you know, I was hopeful we would get through this and, you know, send it to the board for the next meeting, but it looks like this might be a December meeting approval. Cause I think we need to get it to the GSAs at each school and sort of have an understanding of whether there's any more feedback we need to capture. Um, so maybe we can also take that time to review the support plan and see sort of how it works in tandem with this and whether there would be any updates or references to it directly from the policy.
And maybe we can put a pin in this point here about, um, staff obligation in terms of like not outing students or something. And I can look at this and where we talk about the gender support plan and like how staffs operationalize things and see if there's.
Excuse me, I apologize. Um, I have to go to the principals meeting. I will share that form. Dana, I'll share it with you. Dana, could you please share it with everyone?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And, and Ms. Smiley, to your point, I know you asked me a question. I wasn't ignoring you. I was like trying to think about it. And, um, for me, I'm still like learning, like what is policy and then what is like procedure, like what do we actually carry out? Because I think that it requires us to really have that professional development and those conversations with staff about outing and what that.
Yep.
Look like, and you know, so I don't know how much of that goes into policy and how much of that goes into that side of the work.
That's a great point. Yeah.
So I wonder though, if we add that to the last part of this policy, um, where we talk about professional development and whether that, you know, each principal in which kind of schools is required to assure all school staff or whatever rules set forth in this policy.
It's like more than the rules in this policy and how to support students who have gender support plans or something like that.
Yeah. Yes. So rules set forth in this policy. And the school level staff training is provided for this purpose. And in addition, any plans developed to address particular needs of individuals to transition or not be consistent with this policy. So. Trying to think how we would want to say that here.
I think it's to me, what the ad is here is something around not just what are the rules, like you're required to do X, but it's like, it's the high level, what are the rules and how, how do you best support students who are, um, undergoing a gender transition or who have a gender support plan? I mean, we could pick what phrase.
So should we say something like all staff in OCS will be trained on how to support students with a gender support plan or how, do we have recommendations that for Keeling or anyone else here about how we would? Do that? Do you think it would be all staff?
I don't think it would be all staff.
You don't think it, or you do think?
No, I mean, I'm just imagining, you know, bus mechanics and so forth. I think.
Dr. Keeling, were you saying something on mute that we didn't hear?
Oh, I like, I'm reading to myself. And so my lips are reading it out loud to myself.
There's also the piece about the volunteers and is, would that be worth mentioning again, like whatever the classroom based staff or whatever that would be and, um, you know, there, there's the conversation about wanting to make sure that volunteers are aware. I don't, I don't know where that fits, but.
Yeah. Volunteers and substitutes, I think are important to be trained on.
But also to like Eva's point, when you brought up like the, a bus technician, the policy doesn't just apply to students though, right?
Oh, that's true.
Also be sensitive to your coworker.
What, what I'm trying to set up is, or to help you not set up a situation where, I mean, unless you're going to make it part of hiring for every staff person. I mean, that's just a massive undertaking and I don't want you to set yourself up to already be out of compliance with your own policy because even though we trained this school, you know, six months later, different people work there. So I think we want to focus on. I mean, you've got the policy you put in place. We want to focus on what training we want to push out there. But I would counsel against making a requirement that singles out these people have to be trained because there's turnover and just, you know, we, we want there to be periodic training and we do our best to get everybody there. Does that make sense?
It does. I wonder if maybe you could, um, suggest some verbiage.
And is there a desire not? So number two says the principals are responsible for school level staff training. Um, so is the feeling that we don't want principals responsible for that or what's, why does that not cover it?
I think, I think it, it does cover it, like having principals be responsible for school level staff training. What I'm reading this sentence to say is like making sure staff are aware of the rules and the policy and that, and that the training is for that and that that's different than training staff on how to be inclusive, support. And act upon, you know, when students have a plan or are undergoing a transition. So it's like knowing literally, yes, you are required to use their pronouns, but it's also like, and I do think we should require school staff to understand how to um, most sensitively, um, work with students who have a gender support plan, for example. Yeah. Yeah. So like more like implementing and supporting students being the things that we'd want to.
Yeah. So I do still wonder though, what, what is the procedure? And maybe, I don't know if someone from HR is on around protection for staff. I think that that did come up. The feedback.
Yeah. About instead of support students, how to, how to implement this policy and.
Sure.
Yeah. So I wonder now. Go ahead, Carrie.
Okay, that, right after number two there with the each principal, and I don't know if this is a good idea or not, but where, where are the, um, like the subs and volunteers going to be mentioned again? You know, would it be tools required to assure all school staff? Substitute and classroom volunteers are aware? I mean, how, how do you, how do you protect about? You know, volunteers not being made aware and not honoring.
Yeah, I think that's a really important point.
All right. Give me just a second.
Hello, this is Teresa. Can I ask just a question or just provide a little clarity? Um, this would certainly be one of the policies or one of, um, that we would share in our policy assurance documents and it would, um, ensure that all staff members are aware of it. Um, not only would we make staff aware via, um, the policy assurance process, we would also make sure that, um, staff members are aware, especially new staff members in our orientation and onboarding that substitutes will get the information, um, every year through their training. And volunteers, um, I need to think about the volunteers for a moment, but, um, we'll, we'll find a way to ensure that volunteers are made aware of it too. So HR will take on some of, will take on that responsibility as well.
Great. Thank you, Teresa. That's helpful.
You're welcome.
That's great. Um. So does anyone have any other feedback or thoughts about this policy?
I'm here.
So then I wonder, you know, we're waiting. Do you think that we need to bring this back to the next policy meeting or do you think that we should try to get feedback from GSAs? I mean, our meeting is Monday, so that presses us pretty tight.
I'd be inclined to get the feedback from the GSAs and then have it at our next policy meeting. I know we want to move expeditely, but.
No, it's, I mean, we want to get it right. Um, okay. So Dr. Keeling, our next policy committee meeting is November 20th. Um. Would you be able to get the feedback from those organizations, like fit, sort of get information about those organizations and get feedback from them by November 13th? So we, I, I could, you know, have a week to sit with the feedback incorporated as I could. And then we could come back to the meeting to review it on the 20th?
Yes.
Awesome. Okay. So.
There, there was a question that came out of the Equity Task Force and I don't know how, um, the, the procedure for adopting a policy, there was a question around if it goes for public comment.
I'm sorry, I don't understand your question, Dr. Keeling.
Um, before a policy is adopted, is it, um, shown to the public for them to make comment on it and then it goes? And then it goes back if there's any questions or concerns that publics, public have around the policy?
So we would bring it for a first reading to a board meeting. And unless we waived the second reading, there, you know, there's a chance for public comment at every meeting. So folks could certainly say what they wanted to say.
So the idea is, that's why we have two readings of each policy is that you bring it to the board. It's, it's posted on Symbly and the board discusses it. And then we wait 30 days before they adopt it. And so in between is when people would share their thoughts.
So we might pass a first reading or we might say, you know, we pass it with this, this or this change. And then we would bring it to the next board meeting for the final reading. So it sounds like we are done with this one for today and we will bring it back to the next meeting on the 20th and review feedback from GSAs and any other additional feedback you get from school equity teams. So awesome. Thank you, everyone. I'm here. We'll move down to our discrimination policy. Ms. Cunningham-Brown, were you going to walk us through?
Yes. Yes. Hold, hold on for one, yes.
That's a sweet little voice.
That's my grandson. It's almost lunchtime. So the three policies that I'd like to present to you for review and revision. The first is policy 1710 prohibition of discrimination, harassment and bullying. And in the first paragraph, which lists some of the prohibited discrimination on the base of race, color, national origin and sex, I'd like to recommend that we add gender identity.
Could we also add sexual orientation?
We most certainly can.
Yes.
And I had a question about this one. That, you know, the list of things we include in that first paragraph is different than the list. If you go further down to, where is, what's, what's the section?
Talking about B1.
B1, and then actually in B2, there's like lists in each of the places. So there's a list in B1. And then in B2 around harassment and bullying, there's actually the longest list, right? It includes like ancestry, academic status, socioeconomic, some, some things that aren't in in either of those two places. So I wasn't sure if there was a, what the reason was for that. I know it's been edited over time, but I'm curious if there's a reason for that, that those lists are separate? And if not, should we make them the same list?
There is a little bit of reason. I mean, you definitely add, so like at the B1, you definitely add sexual orientation. I think the list in B2 is meant to be examples. And examples of how bullying or harassment would be based on someone being perceived to be different. But it's not necessarily a list of like protected groups. But if you want to add sexual orientation to B1, I, I certainly, I think that's fine. What we, so again, it's, and these policies, of course, come out of the School Board Association and it's written to adhere to legal guidelines. And under the law, what we now know is that discrimination based on sex, discrimination based on gender identity or sexual orientation is discrimination based on sex. But that's not the colloquial way we use those terms. So I think it's fine to break that down.
Okay, great. Sarah, since we are the quorum of the board here, are you good with adding both of those things?
Yes, we definitely should. I still have a question, I think, about why the, why the things are. I'm not totally following why they're different. Because that list in, in 2B is or 2A, 2 or something. It's the, under this, under the first 2 on this page, harassment and bullying include but are not limited to behavior described above. It's reasonably per group. Actual or perceived differentiating characteristic or association with it.
Uh, right here?
Yes, that list.
So I think the harassment and bullying idea is, so discrimination is sort of, it's, it's group identification based, right? It's you're being discriminated against based on your membership in a group or your characteristic. Whereas I think this is to illustrate that harassment or bullying may or may not be based on those characteristics. I mean, you could be subject to harassment or bullying as it says, because you got an F on a test or because you got an A on a test.
Or what you look like, yeah.
Right, or that your dad drives a Chevy, you know?
Yep. And so legally, there's a distinction, legally, there's a distinction between those things.
Right.
Okay. I'm fine with that. This, in the very first paragraph of this policy, is this reference to the Boy Scouts specifically? It feels like a very specific. I feel like there's clearly some history on that one that I don't know, but like what?
It is, it is a federal law singles out the Boy Scouts. And it, you may not be surprised to hear that it arose in the context of the Boy Scouts exclusionary policies. And a law was passed to make sure that we allow them in. So does it have to be referenced here in the first paragraph? No, I suppose not, but we have a Boy Scout Act happen.
So I have a question, question that's maybe sort of tangentially related. If we have organizations that have national bylaws that are exclusionary, is that permissible in our schools? And the bigger question is, should it be?
If you have, if we're talking about student organizations, I think that you have a policy. I mean, I know that you have a student organization policy. And although now I don't, yeah. Maybe it's under education. That implements the Equal Access Act. So let's see. I'm just looking at that policy to see if it addresses that. I'd have to look at that a little more. I think, you know, there's this sort of principle that if you allow student organizations, you can't discriminate based on viewpoint. But meaning if you have a student organization that has a certain viewpoint about gender roles, you can't disallow them based on their viewpoint. But that's different from saying that they have to accept whoever wants to be in the group. I know that there are cases about that at the college level, but it's just something I haven't looked at in a while. So let me look it up.
Okay, we can follow up about that. Because maybe that's something that I would want to bring to a future policy committee meeting. So maybe we can just kind of talk about that in preparation for future stuff.
Yep, and we could come back to this sentence then at that point. I also don't think they're called the Boy Scouts anymore, so. Aren't they just called the Scouts now because they take girls too? I think so.
They're still called Boy, I've got a couple Boy Scouts.
But they, but they do accept girls now.
Yes, yes, but it's, yes.
Okay. Yeah, so maybe we can come back to that in the like student groups discussion. It seems, it seems just having it in like the very first sentence seems out of place to me.
And so we have to actually say that? You're on mute, Eva, sorry. You're on mute.
You don't have to say it here. And I think if we looked through your other policies, we'd find that this scouting rule is somewhere else. So I would say for today, you could probably end that sentence at age and I'll make sure that the Boy Scout law is addressed somewhere else.
Okay, perfect. Ms. Cunningham-Brown, are you making note of that for what we'll bring to the board? Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You made the playground. So the next policy is the equal education opportunities policy. And that's policy 4001. Similarly, this policy lists or affirms that every student, regardless of race, creed, color, this one actually lists sexual orientation. But if you notice, it further goes on in the second sentence. No student on the base of gender and gender identity, marital status, pregnancy or parenthood will be excluded from participating in or denied the benefits of or subject to discrimination under any educational program. What you like in the second sentence after gender identity, would you like sexual orientation to be added since it's not included in the second sentence?
I'm reading. Sarah, just jump in there if you want to say something.
I think I can better see gender and gender identity fitting with this like exclusion sentence than sexual. I'm trying to like imagine examples of where that might be true for sexual orientation. And I can't imagine that. I think it's okay as is because otherwise we'd need to put in like everything again, you know, so.
Well, so I don't know though. I mean, I think sometime, part of the question I was getting at before about like national bylaws and sexual orientation might actually be something important to highlight that can't be used as an exclusionary.
Huh, okay. I mean, if there are situations where somebody would be excluded from participating in or denied the benefits of educational programs or activities, then I think we should put it in there.
I mean, it couldn't hurt to have it, right? Is there any reason we wouldn't put it in there, Eva? Let's just add it in.
Okay, will do.
It sounds okay with you, Sarah.
Yeah. So the last policy for review and consideration for revisions is the recruitment and selection of personnel. And that's policy 7100. And staff recommends in the general principles section to add gender identity. Sexual orientation is already listed in this provision under general principles.
Just as a formatting thing, can we add a space between the last sentence in A and section B?
And actually.
You're good, Sarah.
I think the place where gender identity here is the wrong place. I think it needs to be earlier. There's a long list and then there's an except.
Yeah.
Yes, you're absolutely correct. I see.
Yeah, so just moving it up to the other portion.
Perfect. Okay. So with those changes, are we good to recommend those three policies to go to the board for the upcoming board meeting? And then we'll bring the gender support guidelines back to policy one more time. That sounds good. Okay. Well then, Ms. Cunningham-Brown, if you will just include this for the meeting on Monday, these a first reading of the last three policies that we just did.
Okay. And can staff ask one point of clarification? And I know Eva and I had a discussion with regards to the legal references at the bottom of each of most of the policies. And I've heard several differing positions on whether or not to the legal reference or not. And so I just wanted clarity around that.
Yeah, I think that the issue is that staff have been, there's at least one board member who wants to see them and at least one board member who is asked, thinks they shouldn't be on the website. And so.
The legal references?
Yeah.
Huh, seems like that's, that's been our practice. And the School Boards Association, right, is including the legal references?
Yeah.
So that's, that's what I think we should keep doing. What's the case for not? Yeah, what's the case for not doing that?
I don't know.
Okay. I mean, I think that's the practice and we should, I think that, I think it provides good justification for our policies in a bunch of cases.
Agreed. Well, that's the official recommendation of the committee then. All right. Well, I think that we have gotten through everything. I just want to thank everyone for the time and energy that has gone into working through this new policy, especially just really grateful for all the feedback we've gotten and everyone's commitment to this work. So thank you so much. And I think that's it. So we'll adjourn. Have a great day, everyone.
Have a great day.